Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for January 7th, 2020. Item number one, if we could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brennan?
Here.
Councilmember Lehman?
Here.
Mayor Mars?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras?
Here.
Thank you. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item number three, approval of the agenda. Mr. Reynolds, any changes, corrections?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have one correction. On item 4A2, the city council minutes for 17 December, items 11B2 through 11C1 in the actual minutes did not have the votes or the vote totals. Those have been corrected and are online in the official minutes.
For the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else?
No, sir. Nothing from staff.
Thank you. Counselor Whiting?
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the notations noted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as noted with the two items. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Moving ahead to item number four, consent agenda before us. Mr. Reynolds, any changes?
Nothing other than 4A2 previously mentioned, sir.
Okay. Counselors? Counselor Lehman?
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Before we vote, we would read the consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. These are the consent agenda items for January 7th of 2020. 4A1 adopts Resolution Number R2020 Tac 001, which designates individuals authorized to perform certain banking transactions. 4A2 approves the minutes from the 17 December 2019 meeting as amended. 4A3 approves the application for a taxicab business license for TNT Taxi. 4B1 adopts Resolution Number R2020 Tac 002, which accepts a monetary donation from the Shakopee Lions Club in the amount of $6,000. 4C1 authorizes the purchase of the following: a pickup truck for the fire department for $45,206.44; a mower for Public Works for $112,375.64; three Skidsteer loaders for Public Works for $23,829.60; two dump trucks for Public Works for $126,721.60; and declares equipment held by the Public Works Department as surplus property and authorizes its proper sale or disposal. 4C2 approves a speed limit change on preserved trail between County Road 18 and the Shakopee municipal boundary. 4C3 authorizes the order of a feasibility report for the 2020 alley reconstruction project, which is CIF Tac 20 Tac 2009. And finally, 4C4 authorizes the execution of a professional services agreement with WSB to complete a water level management plan for Quarry Lake.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. I have a motion on the table and a second for the consent agenda that was modified on one item. It's been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Moving ahead to item number five. Now I'd like to call on any resident that would like to come and speak on an item not on the agenda tonight. And please come forward and state your name and address for the record. And welcome.
Thank you. Get up here. My name is Bob Foster. I live at 2284 Pinewood Drive in the Pinewood Estates Development. I'm here to express our concern or understand what's happening with the Knights of Columbus building. And two of our concerns are the added traffic. First of all, we like the zoning that we have for that piece of property. Secondly, we are concerned about the added traffic that might be on Fourth Avenue. And that's all true. We're just trying to understand what's happening. We've got approximately 100 members out there. And so any information that we can get, we'd certainly appreciate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That proposal has not come forward to us yet. And at that time, you can watch for online and see when it's in front of us and coming to the city council chambers on that time.
Will do.
Mr. Reynolds?
And we might also, if we could put a meeting together between staff, and we can brief you on what we understand the project to be at this point. It has changed on a couple occasions since it's, you know, what we understand it to be. But we can certainly do that as well.
Yeah, like I say, we're just, we're hearing rumors. We're just trying to understand. So thank you for your time.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Anybody else like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome. Seeing none, then we would move ahead to item number six, business removed from consent, which was none. Item number seven, I'd entertain a motion to recess to the EDA. Counselor Lehman?
May I make a motion to recess to the EDA meeting?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to recess. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. We stand in recess, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'd like to call to order the January 7th meeting of the Shakopee Economic Development Authority. Please make note of the role. First item on the agenda would be approval of the agenda. Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, I'll offer the approval of the agenda stated.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Contreras to approve the agenda. Any discussion, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. Next item is our consent business with the EDA minutes. Mr. Lehman?
Mr. President, I'll move the consent agenda.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to approve the consent business. Any discussion, discussion, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent business passed unanimously. Item four, we have on our reports, the EDA bill list. Is there any questions or concerns about the EDA bill list? All right, seeing, Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, I'll offer a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, February 4th, 2020 at 7:00 PM.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
We will reconvene the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for January 7th, 2020. And we are on to Administration 9A1, a review of the Riverside Park closing. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This is a new review due to concerns from members of the public who were here at our last council meeting to discuss the proposed closing of the Riverside Field Park ice rink. I do know that they are in the audience and do want to speak tonight, so at some point certainly will like to hear their concerns in person. Essentially, just a little background, following the, as you know, but maybe for the public, following the the construction of both the ice arena and the new additions to the community center, this council had some concerns in regards to the amount of investment that the public had put into those two organizations or structures and had essentially tasked the Parks and Recreation Department with becoming more efficient and more effective. And as you know, every month, their income and expenses are reviewed by this body in some detail. Specifically, there were a couple of things that council tasked the department with. One was to decrease expenses and increase revenues and also to make sure that we're holding fast with customer service. In regards to the ice rink itself, those decisions were passed by council after being passed by the Park and Rec Advisory Committee and also the committee that was formed, an ad hoc committee on parks and trails, which was a steering committee, as we put together the Park Master Plan. As part of that master plan, specifically when we're talking about Riverside Fields, the determination was made to consolidate our efforts in regards to our different ice rinks, frankly, due to the amount of expenses that we were having associated with them and the use, as we took into consideration, the use of on a daily basis. The Park Master Plan essentially determined that we were going to focus geographically and have a west, east, and center outside rinks. And essentially, or excuse me, at first blush, the decision was made to have three rinks open, which were Lyons Park, Green Meadows, and Southbridge. And essentially, once that came to the Park and Recreation Advisory Committee, they made the determination to add Westminster to that list as well because Westminster was the third most-used rink that we had in place. That plan was brought forward to both the Park and Rec Advisory Committee that made that one change in regards to Riverside Fields and then was brought forward to city council. It is staff's opinion that this was well researched. Frankly, it was the second-most researched plan that we've had following the comp plan. We had had over, not only did we have online comments, we had a Park and Rec Steering Committee that was involved for over a year. We had 14 individual community meetings, and then we also had meetings where we were in public, where we were out in the public during events that the city was hosting, where we garnered input from the public as well. You can always second-guess plans and you can always make a determination that things should be different. And essentially, I think that that's where we are today. It has went through a very rigorous planning process. There certainly are valid arguments for the decisions that were made. But ultimately, this is a review for you de novo, meaning brand-new, so you can determine what it is that you would like done with Riverside Fields.
Okay. Questions of staff? Counselor Whiting?
A couple of things. You talked about the Park and Rec Steering Committee, and as I recall, I was briefly on that committee at the beginning of it. That had members of associations from all, representing many, many different, and I think the Hockey Association was definitely on that group.
Yes, sir, it was.
Also, we talked about, you talked about, you know, having the three outdoor rinks. We also talked about quality of our rinks and the quality of our ice, and I think that's important. You know, we've had some pretty sketchy winters, and you can argue why that is. But sometimes the neighborhood park that used to have ice in my neighborhood, which doesn't anymore also, you'd go up and there'd be rocks and gravel coming through the ice, or you might have a melt and you'd have a patchy ice situation. And as far as I know, many of the fields, many of the rinks have gravel as their base. And some of them, I think, have bituminous or tar.
Yep, correct.
And I know the tar doesn't work either because it creates the heat and reflects the sun and melts the ice. So basically, the best surface would be that concrete surface. Is that correct?
Yeah, concrete is the easiest surface to work with and the one that will withhold the ice the most through weather conditions. Riverside Fields is a gravel rink.
So it has some of its most concerns that go along with it and a higher level of maintenance when the temperature goes up. That's my initial questions for now. Thank you.
Other questions of staff?
I have a question. Is there a use or determination on how the boards are going to be used or any of those current facilities are going to be used in the future?
Yeah, that's a good point, Councilwoman. I didn't, I didn't mention that, you know. Part of the plan was to take these boards and the lights and move them to Lyons Park and then give us a double service in Lyons Park to be able then to attract bigger events, you know, have dual broom ball tournaments and other things. And frankly, also to market that with dual sheets of ice, that we could then try to find ways to program that to bring in revenue.
Other questions of staff? If not, I know there's a passionate vocal group here. The last time you came before us, you had a single spokesman. We can allow a few minutes. This is not a public hearing. But if you had a spokesman that would like to come forward and speak behind, on behalf of the group, welcome again.
Hi, thank you for having us again. If I could just start by having everybody here from the neighborhood stand up so you guys can get a good idea of the large amount of people that were willing to come out and show their support. And again, just a reminder, this is only a fraction of the now over 500 people who have signed our petition from the, from our neighborhood and surrounding neighborhoods.
Jess, could you give your name and address for the record?
Yes, sorry. Jess Lowenberg, 1767 Ry Court.
Thank you.
I guess before I get into what I was going to say, I just had a quick follow-up question to the last one. When you guys, you guys told me before that you were planning on reusing the boards and the lights. And I've talked to others about this, and I was just curious, is that really feasible for one question? And two, do you have any idea how much that would cost to tear down all the boards and the lights and move them?
I don't have a cost analysis of what that is, but they're certainly usable. And, you know, we've done that in the past, reused boards.
Okay, it seems like that'd be very expensive. I mean, those are permanent lights. They're not temporary lights installed, but, all right. I guess where do, where do I begin? I mean, you guys know I talked for a very long time last time. But I think what we're asking, I mean, just in summary, I think what we're asking for is, is pretty simple. The park plan is very large, right? It introduces a lot of major changes. And sometimes certain aspects of those changes aren't realized until too late or until later, hopefully not too late. That's basically, we're simply asking you to correct and oversight. And again, it should be very easy to do. I just want to speak to a couple specific things, just so everybody's on the same page and has the correct information. And you're welcome to counter what I'm saying. But I was given the letter that you wrote to the council and the mayor. And it pointed out that there was a little over $16,000 in costs to maintain our rink for a full year. And I just wanted to make sure everybody realized it neglected to say, it also included a link to a breakdown of all the costs. And in that link, it even pointed it out. And I actually talked to Bill Egan, who first told me this, that, but the letter neglected to say that because Riverside Fields is closer to the Southbridge rink, it would actually reduce the cost by one-third. So it would not be a $16,000 cost, it'd be $11,000. Only a $5,000 difference, but still one-third. And then just some of the other line items with the cost were kind of eye-opening. And I guess I just questioned almost why, or, I mean, it seems like a no-brainer. For example, $67 an hour for a shoveler number one and $45 per hour for a shoveler number two seems outrageous. I think you can definitely cut costs there as well as other places. Also, I just, I did also want to point out, again, no disrespect to anybody specifically, but myself and other neighbors did reach out to Mr. Reynolds as well as Mr. Tobin and others. And, I mean, through email, we made calls as well. We were essentially begged to be a part of the brainstorming for a solution. Some of our neighbors were, I can share the emails if you guys would like. Some of our neighbors were flat-out turned down and myself and others were completely ignored. Because I do, and I bring that up because I do think there are, if money really is the issue, I think there are creative solutions. I mean, paying $20 an hour for a shoveler, that's an easy one. But you could, it could be, you could get creative and get some local businesses to sponsor. Put up a sign at the rink with their logo on it for $200 or whatever it is times 10 sponsors. Granted, that's only 2,000. But again, just finding ways to lower the costs. And I'm sure myself and others would be willing to volunteer our time to help with some of that. I mean, again, I mean, without going over everything I said last time, just a couple more points. Again, Mr. Reynolds, thank you for sharing everything you shared and some of those numbers. But I guess I just want to call out again that Riverside Fields was actually the third most-used or, I mean, yeah, according to the numbers I was given, Riverside Fields was actually the third most-used ice rink in Shakopee and also saw the third most year-over-year attendance increase. So, I mean, you would think that it would be one of the four then to remain open. So, yeah, I guess in summary, I think, again, what we're asking is pretty simple. Please keep the, keep our outdoor rink open. And if you need help coming up with solutions, we're more than willing to work with you guys. I don't know if anybody else can speak or...
Well, we just, you know, this is not a public hearing.
You did speak at length on your behalf, the group's behalf, the last time.
This is just one item of a couple items on our agenda tonight. So I know there's a lot of passion here. I know you guys have been vocal of your group. I know that two of our council members served on the Park Master Plan. This has been a year in the making. For me, it almost, it goes directly back to my youth. Change is difficult. And tough to, tough to get a hold of and grasp. And it seems like you're asking the whys now. We had a process that lasted over a year in this regard. I think, I'll speak for myself, but I speak with a broad brush, that decisions we make are decisions that are based on the, what's in the best interest of the community as a whole. I think what we've tried to do with outdoor rinks that, I grew up, I was a rink rat. I lived 59 steps away from our local rink when I was growing up, played hockey for over 20 years. I, what's best in the community and try to be efficient and effective. And the outdoor rinks have slowly been eliminated. And your park is a park. The rink is one aspect of it, right? One style of use. Just like the old monkey bars or the teeter-totters, right? They have changed as well. I think we need to be effective and efficient as a city government. We need to find balance. In the packet, there's a map that I think showed, trying to cover our city in four circles. Are we going to have, you know, Southbridge has some availability with some, as well as residents there. I don't want to get into pitting one neighborhood against another, right? Because we're all in this together. Just four years ago, we built a $30 million community center. And it created two rinks of ice. And I think the ice aspect of the $30 million was 17 or 18 million dollars. We're trying to create balance, and it's difficult when your neighborhood gets impacted on your one individual aspect of that, right? The rink. But it's just like playground equipment changes. Over the next couple of years, Riverside Park is going to be transformed into more of a natural use park that's going to have a lot of money. It necessarily wouldn't have ice. But it's going to change and evolve into something which I think will benefit our entire community. I feel, I don't know how many people took the online surveys for our master plan or went to our couple of open houses or was involved in the dialogue online prior to some of these decisions. Because, Jess, you're correct, the Park Master Plan has some changes in it. And our community and parks will change because, over time. And this, this change occurred now, right? And our, we spent the year process going through it and trying to get residential resident input into the ideas. That's what we try to do, right? We do it with our comp plan. We do it with our parks plan. We have open meetings where you could come. And it's sometimes disappointing when people don't come forward. But then, now here, now the change is here upon us, and now you're coming. And it's, to that aspect, it's slightly disappointing from a council standpoint that after we go through this process, then we, we hear about it after, after... after, after a pretty thorough process, I think. But those are, are my thoughts, and maybe other council members want to weigh in? Uh, Council Whiting?
Uh, just another thought, um, you know, when we had talked about this process, and what portion of our budget we were spending on recreation compared to the cities we, we normally compare to, we were, we weren't, I don't think we were the highest, but we were one of the, the, the top that had the highest budget for park and rec. And, you know, that's a good thing, but we got to make a decision on where we want to be and where recreation fits. And that's what, and this is before the community center and all of that, uh, funding. Uh, I believe that was how it was pegged. So that's even before thinking about the paying that we're paying for the community center and ice. So, it, it's a hard decision of what, what's gotta give. But we, we know, we, you, you mentioned lowering costs and sponsors. And we are looking at that every which way we, we can and trying to find sponsors for, for Zambonis and for, for boards and different things throughout the community. And we, and you talked about the rates of those shovelsers, those are our city employees. That's a rate we use, if I'm correct, that's.
Correct, no.
If you're gonna go dig a ditch, or if you're gonna go shovel snow, those are the rates. That's how, how it's pegged. But it's a difficult decision, and I appreciate your passion. It's just seems, uh, you know, what's, what's gonna give, I guess, so.
Mr. Reynolds?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, and I just wanted to clarify, I did direct staff not to continue to exchange emails with the group. Uh, I exchanged several emails myself, but the reality was, and I explained this to them, is that staff no longer has a vote in this. Staff, you know, this is a council issue. Council needs to make this determination. Staff had input in the beginning of the process, and there were multiple, uh, passages through committees, and then ultimately to the city council. Uh, I explained that to members of the group, and I said that, you know, we're, we're done. We're not going to have this continuing dialogue, which really was serving no purpose.
Uh, Council Lehman, um, this was just, I'll call on you, and I got, I seen you, Council Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to commend your neighborhood for your efforts on this topic. It's not often that we see neighborhoods come together in the masses that you have on your petition for something that you feel deeply about. The Park Master Plan, I was part of that, uh, with Council Brennan. I did not ultimately support that plan in the end. I did vote against it for numerous reasons, this is one of them. Uh, I think it's taken away from our small-town feel. I think it's important for families to be able to have that, uh, family time on leisure ice. I think it's hard to get into the community center, and if you did get into the community center with a family, the experience is nowhere near the same. If it comes down to a funding position, if you read the Park Master Plan, and as I stated when I voted against, it's extremely lofty. Millions upon millions of dollars gonna be spent on that plan. Uh, we don't even know if anybody's gonna use portions of that plan. Uh, and many of the users are gonna be from outside our community. I have a different philosophy than others. When we have this many people coming to us from our, uh, community, who are our constituents, a representative government is supposed to listen. And, you know, I have no problem with keeping your ice rink open. I would like to look at trying to get the cost down. I think the, the initial use information was, I don't want to say it was inaccurate, because it was accurate for the time snapshots that it was done on. It just didn't give a good, uh, overall view of the use in the prime times. No different than the Park Master Plan passing four to one. It wouldn't surprise me if this is another four to one. But that's the way our government works, and, uh, you move forward, so.
Council Brennan?
I, like, um, Council Lehman said, I was on the ad hoc committee. And we did take a really good, hard look at each of the components of the plan. Um, so we didn't skip, we didn't skip anything. Um, but we did determine that Southbridge Community Park was nearby. Um, where I live, there isn't, there is an ice skating rink, as, as Jay said. Um, there isn't one that's close by me, my closest is two miles away. Um, and, and I think when I figured out how far Southbridge was, it was just slightly over a mile. Um, so it's, it's a change in the philosophy and how parks are. And we have Southbridge that will be more of an active, active community park. Um, and then, um, and the Riverside Fields will be more of a passive community park with the, with the, um, environmental and, and boardwalks and that type of thing. Um, so I think, um, it's not difficult to hop in the car. People do it every day, um, to go that mile, to get to that park over at Southbridge. So, I encourage you to do that. Um, we did consider that when we were, we were, um, at the park planning process.
I mean, I think it's, it's, yeah, it's unrealistic to expect children that aren't sixteen years old to drive to the park. And like I mentioned in my first, um, presentation, is that our neighborhood's one of the youngest neighborhoods in Shakopee. And there's literally thirty-five-plus kids under the age of twelve in every cul-de-sac on every street in our neighborhood. I mean, um, and I would also like to reiterate, uh, uh, Mr. Lehman's, uh, points that, um, I a hundred percent agree with. Like, you guys, to an extent, are supposed to hear us out at least. And also, I was gonna bring up some of the same points about how overall this plan is costing, uh, multi-millions. And, um, I, out of, and there's lots and lots of changes. And as far as I know, uh, we're the only group, again, over five hundred people. That's, that's a lot of people. Uh, we're the only group that's come forward and, and expressed, um, our unhappiness, our concerns with this one particular change. Like, out of that huge plan, it's definitely not too late to make one relatively minor change. And that is roughly eleven thousand dollars, um, out of, again, millions and millions to continue, uh, upkeep and, and maintaining, uh, one, one additional ice rink. Again, the third most used in all of Shakopee.
Thank you. Young lady, would you like to please come forward and state your name and address for the record? And welcome.
Hi, my name is Sarah McDonne. I back up to the park, I'm at eighteen sixty-four Foothill Trail in Shakopee. Um, the main concerns I'd wanted to bring forward was, I was very involved in the decision-making for the park process to begin with, sorry, I'm losing my voice. And I appreciated that involvement, and I was very happy with the outcome of what we had. I did not and was not aware of this process that had been taking place for the last years. So, the first time I heard anything about it was when I saw the master plan come forward. And from what I saw of that plan, the ice rink was still in place. So I was not even made aware that there was going to be any changes to the park as it is outside of the addition to what's coming forward. And while I love, love all the walking paths in our neighborhoods, that's one obvious plus, cause I'm a runner and I liked having it all connect. But it did seem like a lot of, of focus on that. And when I was first originally involved, we were told that there might be additional baseball fields or something like that put in. I know with that whole neighborhood coming in, we're all gonna want some sort of park place for the kids to play. The main thing I wanted to bring forward was I was not aware of the planning process until I was heard of the plan. So, that's my main disappointment, I guess.
Thank you. Yeah, the, the process was well over a year. I think we did a couple of surveys online. I think we, uh, communicate via mail, too. I think at least twice a year, if not three times a year, in our hometown messenger, which has a lot of information.
Rhythm on the rails. Rhythm on the rails.
Uh, rhythm on the rails, there was, uh, uh, active in there. I mean, how do you want to be reached, right? Um, I think as a community, we do a pretty good job, but can't force you to read it, can't force you to go online. You gotta, you kinda gotta want it and, and reach out. And I'm not, I think there is a lot of information, right? And you gotta pinpoint how to get there. A lot of us, you, you know, we use Facebook, but what's, what's real and isn't. And, but if you like the city on their Facebook page or the Park and Rec Department, they're putting that information out, and, and you have a chance to see it on a weekly basis, or at least perk your interest of things that are happening within our community. I think outreach has gotten substantially better in the last five years.
Yeah, yeah, I am, and we're not trying to fault anyone or, or point fingers. Like, I did read anything I saw about that park, to be honest. And I've actually even been since, um, from various, uh, city employees, they sent me all the information, and like, it's almost, like, I don't know, twenty-plus things I've read even recently, just keep rereading, rereading, because, yes, you guys did a great job with the planning. Like, these, the park improvements are probably gonna be amazing. And again, we have nothing wrong with that, but nowhere in any press releases or social media, like, I, I asked multiple people in the city staff, like, please prove to me, like, I was begging them to prove to me where it says anything about Riverside Fields Ice Rink. And there was no direct communication about that specifically. And that's what we specifically have issue with. So, I mean, it seems like there's a little back and forth that I would like to try to avoid, because, again, your guys' park plan is, is good. It's, it's great. Um, nobody had any issue with it, um, except for maybe the, the high taxes, uh, high tax increases. But, um, we appreciate all the work you guys do. And we're not trying to take anything away from you guys. Um, there's just this, again, this one relatively small thing we're asking for. Small thing that was overlooked, wasn't communicated to us at least. Again, out of the millions and millions of dollars that this park renovation is gonna cost, again, it's very, very simple. Just focus on the, the simple part, that this is a small eleven thou, relatively small, again, eleven thousand dollar change per year that we're asking for. And again, we're willing to work with people to find creative ways to pay for it, if, if money is truly the issue. But I, I, again, I question if that truly is the issue when we're spending millions and millions of dollars on these park renovations.
Jess, thank you very much. Um, bringing it back here to the council, uh, you know, further comments here are, um, you know, I, I understand the money issue. Uh, can spend some money, can try to save some money. To me, it's really bigger than the money. It's about being efficient and effective. It's trying to find balance. Also, it's, uh, as much, I, I grew up playing hockey. My uncle was a doctor for the nineteen sixty Olympic team. I have hockey in my blood. But it, I look at it as a singular use of a park. Cause in a park, there's lots of components, right? There could be a trail, there could be a dog park, there could be, uh, playground equipment. And that all changes over time. How we use parks has changed. And that's actually what some of the basis of our Park Master Plan was, to bring that up to today's standard. Uh, it's two thousand and twenty, we're, we're not playing on the teeter-totters of the seventies and eighties anymore. Effective and efficient, creating balance, um, finding out what's in the best interest of the community as a whole, even though this affects your tight-knit neighborhood. And I do understand that. As I grew up, when the hockey, or the tennis association became bigger than the hockey association, and they laid down top-of-the-line cement with a coating on it, and that's when we couldn't flood that, our rink anymore. Cause there used to be clay, you could flood over the clay, and then the, the, the tennis people would get mad in the spring cause it took a long time to dry out. But their group became bigger, and, and I lost hockey that was fifty-eight steps from my door. But actually, it, I had to go play hockey at a different rink. And I met new friends, new people, new teammates. And now that I'm older, I look back and I just talked to one of the friends from that rink just the other day in Duluth. I think in the end, it really all worked out, as much as I was mad at the time. But, um, we did do a long process on this. We had the Park and Rec Committee involved, and Master Park Plan, uh, Process Committee involved, which is a pretty big group. That's kinda where I stand, did you want?
I just wanted to say, you know, you talked about the tennis. And now, even in our community, through our master planning process, we're finding out that in our future, we're gonna be digging out the tennis courts and putting in pickleball courts, because pickleball is the new thing, and it's, it's very popular. It's very hard to make the, pick the choices, what's gonna be hot in the future, and what's, what's the value to what we're investing? And, and that's why it's, it's, it's important, so.
How do you want to move forward? I guess there is no, we have some choices, or we can reaffirm? Council Lehman?
I'll make a motion to, uh, leave it open and absorb the cost. And work with the, uh, neighborhood to find unique ways of lowering the expenses.
Okay. Motion on the table? Motion on the table? Motion on the table? Uh, motion will fail for lack of a second. You want to take further action?
I, I don't know if we need to, um, because we've already approved the.
You wanna reaffirm that? Make a motion to reaffirm?
I make a motion to stand with the decision that's been previously made.
I'll second that.
That was a second?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, a motion in a second to stand on our previous decision by the council, by the Park Master Plan Committee, and the Parks and Rec Board. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes, four to one. Thank you very much for your passion, your involvement, and your vocalness, we do appreciate it. Thank you.
I, I obviously don't agree with that decision, and, I mean, I didn't want it to come to this, but five hundred people is a large amount, and it would have swayed your last election. I mean, it's not a threat, but you guys.
Thank you, Jess.
You're disappointing five hundred residents. Like, if you, it, I, I like, almost, you guys couldn't get five hundred people to come forward on any issue. Little, this park issue. You guys told me yourselves, you couldn't get anybody to come to your meetings.
Thank you. Move ahead to ninety-two, the twenty, twenty twenty-four Strategic Plan. Nate?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My apologies, cause I didn't put it in beforehand. So as we discussed at the last meeting, um, I'm bringing this back today so that you have kind of a little bit more chance to discuss in depth. I only have thirty-eight slides. I'm kidding, it's ten. But, um, I'm gonna go through pretty quickly, and I'm gonna let, for the most part, what I'm looking for here what I'm looking for here is any further direction that the council has. We had brief discussion about what this plan looked like last time. Um, and now I'm looking for kind of specific ideas, specific things that y'all can agree, that you want to see changed, before we either bring it back next time, or if you don't think that there are significant enough changes to make between now and the next time, I think that it's all right to just approve now, so we can really get going on this. So I'm gonna go through the vision, the mission, the values, and then I'm gonna go through each of the four strategic priorities, uh, and then kind of talk a little bit about next steps. But the proposed vision right now is that Shakopee is a place where people want to be, a distinctive river town with a multitude of businesses, cultural and recreational opportunities in a safe, welcoming, and attractive environment for residents and visitors. And then I bullet pointed the words that I thought meant something in that vision statement below, because to me, that's kind of interesting when you can actually pull that out and say, you know, we've talked a lot over the last two or three years about how important the river is to this town, um, and how we have that going for us. And that's something that, you know, you can actually see in the strategic plan. We're actually trying to work on. So that is the proposed vision as it sits, uh, and I'd look for any comments specifically for anything that you might like to see changed on that.
Comments on this? I think I've looked at it. I like the different wording from our past vision aspect. I think it's, uh, dials in a little more. Um, it brings in the culture aspect, the business aspect. Um, it more highlights the river town aspect. Um, you know, welcoming has a warm feel to it and attractive. And I, I think those are slightly some key words that are significantly, in my mind, different than the last vision statement. Councilor Whiting?
No, I, I agree. I think those words you pulled out, I like the distinctive river town. I think that's, uh, that says something to me. And, and I also, I, I keep going back to the, the safe. And, and we always hear that in our, uh, you know, talks about, you know, Shakopee being a safe place. We know it is. Sometimes people don't feel safe. So I, I like to, you know, emphasize that and reiterate that, so I think that's good.
Councilor Contrash?
I like it. Every word on there, I mean, to me, and again, just hearing the word "safe", and the work that our police officers and everybody does, to me, it's just perfect. The culture, the welcoming, makes me feel welcomed. So, thank you.
Councilor Lehman, you've been through a couple of these vision statement things. What jumps out at you?
Well, I, I like our original better. And on our agenda, where it has the A through F, I, I think it highlights everything we're trying to say, but it's more specific. Keep Shakopee a safe and healthy community where residents can pursue active and quality lifestyles. This is where the resident gets to pursue, instead of government telling them, "You want to be here." They may not want to be here, and they may be working to try to make it a place that they want to be at. Positively manage the challenges and opportunities presented by growth, development, and change. Maintain the city's strong financial health. A lot of these are overlaps, worded differently. Efficient, effective public services by a staff of well-trained, caring, and professional employees. These are key points to what anybody would expect of government. So, I'm, I'm, I like the original one better, myself.
That's fair enough. Uh, Councilor Brennan?
Um, I think in our old statement, it said that there was a small-town feel. And I think each of the items that you have identified here in this vision really exemplify what that small-town feel is. And for me, a small-town feel is, is being safe. I mean, that's just the number one, where I can walk down the street, and I know who my neighbors are, and I, and I feel safe. Um, and I think, um, uh, recognizing the business component of it and being an attractive and welcoming, welcoming places is, um, is very good.
Hearing, we're pretty comfortable with that.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, proposed mission is, our mission is to deliver high-quality services essential to maintaining a safe and sustainable community. We commit to doing this cost-effectively with integrity and transparency. And here again, I pulled out the words that I thought were fairly important.
Uh, Councilor Brennan, waiting?
Oh, thank you. You know, I, I like this even better than the first statement. I know these are all together, they're, they're encompassing, uh, but this really speaks to me a little more in volumes of, of that safe and sustainable community, kind of like I was reiterating before, and, and cost-effectively, and integrity, and in transparency. Talks to, about our, our, both our financial position and our, the way we want to react with the community. So, uh, I, to me, this is like mission. This is marching orders, and this, this states that, and I can see it in, in the wording.
I found it was interesting. I didn't realize myself, until I actually put the bullet points in, that "safe" was in both of them.
We'll get you the source out, and, uh...
There you go.
For me, the vision is for, if I was a resident or thinking about coming here, the visions for maybe on the, looking on the outside, looking in. To me, this mission statement is more for, I feel like, us internally, how we want to project, right? Out, what we want to do out. So, um, high-quality service, maintain a safe, sustainable community, um, commit to what we're doing in cost efficiency with integrity and transparency. And I know that over the last couple, many years, transparency has been a big, big push here, uh, cost-effective, uh, obviously one of our core, you know, work-plan goals every year on if that relates to taxes, but everything we should do, right? Everything that we do should be cost-effective, cost-efficient, uh, to the best ways. We just had a, a conversation on cost efficiency. But, um, yeah, I like, I like this mission statement from, uh, how we look at the city inside, projecting out. Others?
Um, it's a, it's like the nuts and bolts of what our function is. And I think it's well, I think it's well-defined and laid out.
Okay. The next slide is proposed values. Um, not gonna read all of it, but integrity, um, which includes ethics, if you look at the definitions, not here, but, uh, best for the community, which is, I think, comments that I've heard three of you make today already. Um, accountability, innovation, welcoming, slash, open to difference, fair and consistent, and fun. Um, and these are the things, this again applies primarily to the city as an organization. These are the things that, uh, you know, if you don't know, the city administrator or I actually meets with every new employee when they come in and we talk about our values. Um, and, uh, right now, it's primarily customer service and ethics, um, but I think we'll eventually incorporate things like this in, too.
Comments on these?
I, I always have thought that we are very innovative. Um, so I'm glad that that's incorporated in there. I see, um, the employees are coming, always coming up with new ideas and new ways of processes of doing things. So, I'm glad to see that in there. Um, best for the community, I think, um, example is tonight, where we have to look at the bigger picture and not just the individual interests.
Sorry.
Um, others?
I can jump in. You know, I, I can, you know, reiterate what Councilor Brennan said, uh, exactly what I was looking at. Uh, we experienced it tonight, and we had came up with a decision on our parks, and that's part of the integrity. We, we said we were gonna do this plan, and that's what we're gonna do. And we're working on the, you know, the best-for-the-community part of working on the broader for everybody. I, I just want to reiterate that, and, um, I think that's great, because I think that's what we do.
I think, uh, for me, the accountability, um, committed to achieving results, and I'm sure here in a little bit, we're gonna get in and talk a little bit about that. But, um, accountability for our actions kind of even goes to the integrity, you know? We say what we mean, and we will do what we say, the, um, accountable for our actions if, you know, and it's already been brought up twice here, but we have taken, made a decision on our actions here over our Park Master Plan and our Comp Plan, and then, you know, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna stick to that here, because that was a pretty long thought-out conversation over the last year. Um, and, you know, I didn't, it just seemed like a, yes, a strong, vocal, passionate neighborhood group, but, you know, we represent the entire community, right? And so, but the values here, um, I, I, it hit homes for me, hit homes to me. Others? Uh, Councilor Contrash?
Thank you. Um, fair and consist, um, the consistency, the, the, the... It, it comes back to my mind, maybe the last meeting we had. One of us said, you know, "You can't change things for one group or one person." And when this came back again for the fourth time, yeah, let's stay, let's stay fair and consistent, and not just sway by what one group says or wants. So unfortunately, maybe we don't make someone happy, but again, we have to look at the bigger picture.
I like, I like having fun, too, so. I'm glad that's in there.
We don't, we don't do that at all around here.
Councilor Lehman?
You know, when I read these, I, I thought these were basic expectations that a citizen would have of any level of government, regardless of this process.
And Councilor Lehman, I think that's true. And, and the interesting thing for me, in looking at these, is I probably could have wrote these on the back of a napkin before we started the process, because it, this does encapsulate, but it puts down on the paper what I think we do every day.
These are the basic standards that anybody would expect out of any government organization. It's almost like this is the minimum that you have to do in any government organization, uh, as an expectation from the public. I mean, we can sugarcoat it all we want, but it's really what the expectation is by anybody.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump into the slides that are, I'm gonna do one slide for each of the strategic priorities. Now remember, this is the tip of the iceberg. This is the ten percent of the iceberg that you see after we go through those four slides. Then I've got one brief slide talking about next steps, um, which is where we kind of get into the tactical slash action planning. So, the first, um, strategic priority is, and if you see red, it's because I added a word. I think we need to say something else, so ensuring financial stability. Um, you can see that these are the, you know, the desired outcomes, the key outcome indicators. For now, I'm asking that we hold off on setting targets. And my primary reason is this, I'd rather not set a target without having some sort of an assurance that I think we can really hit it. Um, and for now, not knowing what every, you know, having brainstormed significantly with those people that are gonna be responsible for these things, um, I can't say for sure what kind of timelines we're gonna be working on on everything. So I'd ask, um, and I'll, at least another three months, so we can put together the action plan, so we can throw good targets onto things, um, so that we're doing something meaningful as opposed to just putting words out there for the sake of doing it.
But you could, you could plug in some baseline stuff, right? We know what our tax rate is today.
We sure do have, and then there are some suggestions, if you look at the one page that went out with the agenda. Um, and, and I think those can stay. I'm asking that we kind of wait to fill in the blanks until we have a better understanding of, you know, the timeframes that we're looking at to actually complete these things. I mean, Nate, the Finance Director, and I got into about a, you know, half-an-hour-long philosophical conversation about what the ta, what the best measure for tax rate actually is. Uh, I don't think either of us won that one, so. He probably did, and I just didn't admit it, I don't know.
You know, we have a lot of work as a staff to analyze what appropriate targets are, and, uh, uh, make sure that we're setting targets that are, that we can realize, but also that are challenging. And, uh, you know, that's gonna take some work on our end, and, and we're just simply not there yet.
But I think that, like I said, uh, here, looking at this slide, the tax rate, we know what two thousand and twenty's tax rate is. We know what last year's was. Non-property tax revenue as a percentage, or we know what those numbers are as that baseline, and then try to figure out your target. Is it a, on some of these, it'll be a, maybe a dollar amount, some of it'll be a percentage, and then how many years are you gonna take to get there? I know you and I were talking the other day about, um, there's a slide about, uh, job growth and job wage growth, and I think we have our nineteen dollars today. And there's been some slight conversation about moving that number up again. And, uh, I think that would be a great discussion and something we should do. And then, so, what, what do we move it to, and then over time, how does that grow into that?
I think that, for me, and, and the reason why, we do have data, but the, the challenge is, for example, with the non-property tax revenue, a, a vast majority of that, if we just took all of the non-property tax revenue and said, okay, we want to move that up, it's kind of difficult, because let's, you know, so much of our non-property tax revenue is community center admissions. And yes, we want to increase those, but, um, we should probably also celebrate when we have an additional ten thousand dollars in ice arena revenue, or we have an additional five thousand dollars in, uh, in, uh, party rentals, uh, at the community center. So, coming up with something that's true, and something that's, that's sustainable and, and, um...
Measurable.
Is fair, I suppose, in terms of measures.
Realistic.
Is, yeah, and it's saying, we're simply gonna try to increase non-property tax revenue by ten percent is kind of disingenuous. It's, it's better to find a way to measure and target certain things, so.
All right. Uh, do, Councilor Whiting?
No, I, I don't think this board should be setting those targets. You know, we've talked about the go, the goals and outcomes, and, and talked about the key outcome indicators. I believe that should be staff's.
Okay, Mr. Reynolds?
And I think it's also important to understand that, you know, it's not just gonna be one target. Uh, from my perspective, we're gonna have multiple things as part of that. Uh, you know, ultimately, will, which will come back, and, and, for example, non-property tax revenue, we're not gonna be just targeting one type...
Of revenue.
Of revenue.
Right.
You know, we're gonna have several different types of revenue that we're gonna focus on, but ultimately, we'll move the needle.
Yeah. Councilor Lehman?
I disagree that the targets need to be set by staff. And the reason I say that is, you can say a, a stable tax rate, or, and define an, an area you want to be, but then you also have these other things you want to do. So really, this body is ultimately responsible for levy, how much we're gonna levy, how much we're gonna collect, how much we're gonna spend. Um, and when it gets into things like individual services, do we want a dry pavement plowing policy, do we not? These are ultimately council decisions, not staff decisions.
And we've made those decisions.
Well, there's no doubt about that, but that's not what we're discussing here.
Okay.
You know, those, those are, those are essentially, what council is doing is setting the goals, and that's a policy body's decision. Uh, ultimately, there are other things that will happen that, of course, you also have the responsibility for. But this is a, a, you're setting the goals, and then it's up to staff to figure out how to get you there. And, and yes, we're gonna have to balance a lot of things to make that happen.
But I heard Councilor Whiting say that staff would set them goals.
No, we've set the goals, the targets.
The targets are the, the, the pieces, the building blocks that get us to your ultimate goals.
Okay, so we'll have to set them goals, and then you'll have to figure out how to, how to achieve them.
Well, that, that's what the desired outcomes are.
Right.
So, you know, we, we've talked about this in our workshop, where, and these were yours. These came from the body.
Yep.
Uh, stable tax rate, diverse revenue sources, adequate funding of CIP. It's ultimately up to us to determine how we get there.
Okay. And the...
And the way we know how we do it is by the targets and actually measuring it. Because we could come here and say that, yeah, we achieved X. Well, how do we know? Uh...
Okay.
And my point today is not to say we are not going to do that and not give the council the chance to set that goal. The, the point is, I think it's fair for us, the staff, to spend more time being realistic about what we can, you know, giving you the options, and, and being realistic about, okay, this is a stretch goal, and that's fine. I could, I could have wrote numbers in here, uh, but in truth, that would have just been a guess. I think over the course of the next couple of months, we can be something more targeted.
And my point on the key outcome indicators, not that I use the word "outcomes" in here, but we could run a five-year running total of our tax rate to kind of see where our baseline was. Same with non-property revenue. Also with the CIP, uh, figure out, uh, every year how much we've spent. The strategic initiative for me on the CIP is to put it all in, in order, in a process that we're talking about, that, that creates efficiency... that we're talking about that, that creates efficiency and effective and, and drives that in a, in a plan. So to see where this baseline was, and then instead of the word target be a goal, what do you, what do I want? I want that tax rate to be a little lower. I want non-property tax revenue to increase. I want my CIP to be, you know, steady, right? With no, no big ups and downs. Okay?
Anything in particular on this slide, then?
Any more on this? Okay.
The next strategic priority is enhancing community strengths. And if you remember, we were talking about this. This was about looking at the things that, you know, the big ideas. It was about looking at the things that this community has that are distinctive, as in being a river town, et cetera. So here again, I've got the priority outcomes and the strategic initiatives out there, and I'd look for any advice on what you may want to change.
Counselor Lehman?
This is the one area where I've got yeses and nos in private sectors written down. Obviously, the big idea is too expensive, no. Enhance quality of employment and jobs, absolutely. I totally agree that the wage needs to be higher, especially for tax incentives. And then successfully manage entertainment options for tourism and visitors. I see the tourism visitors as a private sector function with the Chamber and CBB doing a lot of that, and how are we doing this? Increase holding power, how do we, is this really government's role to tell somebody that's in town for whatever entertainment reason that they have to stay overnight? It's.
Well, if we continue to beautify our riverfront or our downtown, that creates economic growth within it, also creates a draw to have people come there. Every community does those things.
Then we need to take the dollars spent on that and see if it's justified by the outcome. Right?
Well, we're trying to, I don't know the Convention Bureau pass-through B.
Well, if we're gonna spend $5 million on trying to get increased holding power, are we not gonna monitor and.
Measure that.
And measure holding power?
Well, that's exactly right. That's what the targets are all about, is that we are then measuring whether or not we're successful at what we're attempting to do. And understand that a lot of these are, are interrelated. You know, we want to have a sta, a stable tax rate. Successfully managing, or excuse, excuse me, successfully maximizing the entertainment options for tourism and visitors will help us to get a stable tax rate. And how is that? We have people coming into our community that are spending money that don't live here. So they really don't use our services unless they get arrested, which we'll talk about later. They don't really use our services. They ride in our streets, and they come in and they, they, they take part of our entertainment values, and they spend money in our businesses, in our restaurants, in our hotels. And so that encourages more businesses, and that encourages more restaurants, which incre, which then will grow our economy and decrease our tax rate. So a lot of these things are interconnected, and it's important that we don't just pick one or two out. It's like a spider web. You know, you touch it, and it's gonna, it's gonna reverberate around everything else. And, you know, that's, that's part of why it's important to analyze the targets, to make sure that what we're measuring is correct, and we understand the implications of that.
And, and measurable.
And not to.
Counselor Whiting?
Well, the, the strategic priority here is to enhance the community's strengths, and entertainment is one of our strengths in Shakopee. And to, and by maximizing that, I think that helps everybody, just spreads that out, so.
I think, in, in my opinion, to be clear on this and to kind of build on what Bill is saying is, is that the Chamber, the Traveler, the, the Convention Bureau, they, they still have a role. It's just that, you can see from the initiatives, we're going to try and make sure that we're intentionally collaborating around what can we do as a community to build that. And what I'm really thinking about is the River Walk in San Antonio. A couple of years ago, we were able to go there, and I think that's an old, that's really an old drainage ditch, right? And they've turned that River Walk into a massive entertainment and tourist draw, without which I think that you'd look at downtown San Antonio and say, there's nothing here, because the Alamo is really tiny and it's pretty much nothing. So my point is that the idea is that we're doing things that are within the city's scope to make sure that, that we are in fact maximizing Shakopee as an entertainment and tourism destination.
Okay, more, less?
Just, I'm sorry, question.
Counselor Whiting?
Would you measure that in, in, I know we're not there yet, but would you do that at night stayed for like a hotel use, or would you measure that in the successfully maximizing the entertainment part? What are your thoughts on how you'd measure that or target that?
And Counselor Whiting, that was the suggestion, was, you know, we're looking at the number of nights that the average person stays when they come to Shakopee. I think that there's more work that needs to be done on that. I'm not sure what other, I, I perused briefly about what kind of measures might work for something like this. I think there are other options and things that, but we're, I don't want to get too far into the weeds, but you talk about leading and lagging indicators.
Right.
And I think that it's gonna take a while, particularly with this one, to actually realize the value in terms of measures like holding power. Are people really coming, and are they also visiting Hubert Park when they go to Canterbury, for example? It's gonna take a while to figure those things out, and that's more of a lagging than a leading, and I think we can find something that leads to give us an indication of whether or not we're going in the right direction.
Thanks.
Anything else here?
No, we're good.
The next one is effective public services, and this is the point where I would like to make the, the statement that just because it's not in the strategic plan doesn't mean it's not something that we do anymore, right? We're still gonna plow roads, we're still gonna have police on the streets. It's just that, and, and some of these, and these things touch plowing roads, and they touch police on the streets. It's just that, for now, it's not something that we're gonna prioritize doing projects around from a strategic perspective. Some of it has to do with the fact that we probably do it pretty well already. But the strategic priority is effective public services, and I'll let you kind of walk through it, and tell me if there's anything you'd like to see changed here.
Counselor Lehman?
Two, effective infrastructure planning is that the ongoing infrastructure to operate this community, or is it the future wants, needs, and, or wants and desires? Or both? And, and if it's both, is it prioritized in, you know, you, you have a sewer line collapse, you need to fix that obviously immediately? But then you have a CIP item that's five years out, that's just kind of like a nice thing to have, not necessarily needed to operate a, a government city. How do you balance it two and separate and prioritize?
To me, that one in particular ties to A, C, and D in the strategic initiatives. Effective infrastructure planning, you know, I think that we can plan further out. I think it also ties back to fiscal stability or financial stability, because if we're planning our infrastructure effectively, it's, it's going to help with overall financial stability. I think what you're getting at is, are we like looking for, you know, adding to the things that we're already doing, or are we looking to maintain and, and kind of do what we've always done? I think that the balance is somewhere in between, and I think that that's actually, if you look at the, developing the service level standards, that is the point at which the council has the lever to pull to say, this is what our expectations are regarding infrastructure planning. Right about now, Steve, as I understand it, we go back and we seal coat a road after three to four years, correct? For the first time? And we recently made that change. That's part of the budget from this year, from six to eight years would be the first seal code. Am I correct in that, too?
Steve?
Depending?
We're actually looking at earlier seal coating, but in.
But we're moving it back.
An interim seal coat after the initial one is done.
Yeah, so we're moving it, we're moving it closer, and the reason for that is that our engineering team has done some study and analysis, and they've found out that it's a more effective infrastructure planning technique to put that seal code on first, to put it on sooner, put it on again sooner, and it's gonna extend the life of the road. So, and ultimately, as the assistant and engineer told me, is that it's going to stop the road from deteriorating earlier on and ultimately keep it in better condition for a longer period of time. We could have a measure somewhere in the service level standards that says we're going to have an average grade of, I think you use A through F on those roads?
Yeah, like a, like a range from zero to 100, 100 being the best, where we'd have a standard of 70, and that would be our goal. That's what we budget for. That would be where we're, we're, we're trying to maintain. And that would be in our pavement management system.
Get to some level and then try to maintain it at that level, right?
And here's what it takes to maintain that level, that rating.
I mean, it's just like anything, you, you know, if you, if you buy a widget and you don't maintain it, and it goes downhill, then you can either pay me now or pay me later. Or when you buy it, you can try to maintain it and try to keep it at a, at a high level until, you know, until it, it serves its life. I know you just threw a wrench away that was 25 years.
Yep.
Huh?
Yes, I did. Well, actually, I still have it, it's just not usable.
You used a lot of words to try to explain. To me, it's, you develop the service level standard, which the council then sets. You want the 70% pavement quality on average. We make sure that we are effectively planning our infrastructure around that goal, along with ensuring fiscal stability, along with all of the other elements. There's a big spider web of connections throughout this plan.
Would you ever come in?
Yeah, I think you've explained it pretty well, but I remember us struggling with that effective term, that effective public service, whether or not it's, we're not gonna be above and beyond, we're not gonna be the gold standard, we're not gonna be trying to catch up to everybody, but we're gonna be planning and at least have a plan in place for what we know to come. So it's a, I know we struggled with this when we talked about it, but I think you've explained it well, and I think we're, where we need to be on it.
Well, the effects of the unmaintained infrastructure, you guys all read newspapers and articles about other communities around the nation or around our state, and, you know, I keep on picking on Duluth because they just happen to be such a great example in certain things. They let their street infrastructure go bad so, so bad, they, they had to get a referendum and a state approval for a sales tax to invest in their roads. Now they're gonna put six, I don't know what the number was, $6 million a year for the, they can't, you know, it's gonna take them 100 years to, to get back up to this level, to an area where they can perform to maintain it at a level. So we don't want to be like that, I hope. All right, more?
Anything else?
Good.
I added in, read excellent communication.
Well, let's, let's add that.
I have a lot of E's going in here, I thought the E alliteration was fun. And here again, anything that you would like to see changed here?
I'll be back in just a second.
He said it's okay.
Okay.
I read the whole thing, so.
Any issues with this one? No one?
Continue.
Okay.
He didn't ask for a recess, so.
Okay. That's the last of the slides as far as the, the four strategic priorities, so I'm sure you're all excited about what's next.
Can we, can we go back, Nate? I just want to make a point. I think it's important, and we had an example of that tonight. You know, just because we have more, more voices engaged in the decision-making process doesn't meet, you know, the, the target is not to make everyone happy.
Right.
We certainly want to have as many voices as part of the process as we possibly can. And, and frankly, as you know, because of the Riverside Fields discussion, we're changing internally what we do to go above and beyond to try to notify communities of, of park changes in their neighborhoods. Hasn't been done before, but we're, we're going to do that to try to get ahead of the curve and make sure that we're giving everyone the opportunity to be heard. But there are times, you know, that we're not gonna make people happy, and that, you know, sometimes there are balances and decisions that have to be made, because as we, Nate and I both said, it is a spider web. Things will affect other things. If we're gonna make everybody happy, I can't keep taxes low and, and, and do everything else we're supposed to do. It is a balance.
But you want, you know, we take pride that, I've been around the community a while, so, you know, all of us, to see the amount of engagement for the comp plan, actually the park and rec master plan. Those numbers weren't around 10 years ago. Has technology gotten better? But I think in the last three, four, or five years, our technology, our output here from the city has gone straight up. And, and my point a little bit tonight was, are folks gonna grab that? And how they, how do they want it? How do they, you know, and it's hard to figure out how they, how they want it. We mail it to them, it's on social media. If they push the right buttons, and we, you know, we do inserts and, you know, you want engagement, and you don't want what happened typically tonight, where you have someone, you know, questioning a decision that's already been made. You'd rather, would have had them last spring or last summer involved, right? So, but I, I think we have made great improvements on communication. Can we continue to improve? Absolutely. All cities are dealing with this.
I like the addition of the branding in there, because I would like to see something like made in Shakopee brand, in, in addition to just a, a brand of what the city is. So I hope that's looked at.
Counselor?
Just one other comment. You know, we're trying to effectively communicate, and I like the strategic initiative of trying to, reaching out to those underserved populations, because we are a diverse community, and different pockets of the community get their information in different ways. And so trying to develop those strategies, I think, is gonna be key and important to, to get that communication out there.
Do you have a comment on any of the communication aspect?
Well, Mayor, communication is always key. It has benefits, beginning at time when you're writing with rocks on the edge of the caves. You know, we saw it tonight with the hockey rink issue, claiming that they weren't aware or whatever. I don't know what the solution is. You know, I'm, you know, one side of me thinks, if you take all of these issues that we deal with and have a site within the site to put them out there, but then you're adding people to manage that, and who's reading it? You know, I, I think all options need to be on the table for communication.
Okay. I think one of the best things that we've done are those community surveys, because they kind of benchmark where you're at, at, every couple of years, right? And then, and then it can, then you can grab a hold of a piece of that and, and say, well, we did well here, but we're really, we struggled over here, and I think, you know, the last time we found out, you know, we need to, perception and reality about safety was a, you know, kind of a, a, a issue, and yeah, let's work on that. So anything that we can do to, to a survey, and also what, what I saw here was increase the participation. And I, again, I can put it out there, not sure how I can get them to get engaged in, in taking a survey, right? Okay?
All right. And finally, last slide. So for each initiative, we have to now put together an action plan. And here's an example, and if you notice, my color code on the right side is better than finances, because it's thumbs up instead of just arrows. But for the strategic priority of excellent communication, just for example, and this is not what it's going to end up being, and just to kind of demonstrate to you that the plan that you're approving is really just the tip of the iceberg. There's more that goes into it. With the initiative of being, being, develop and implement a strategic communication plan, you can see the list of actions, the measures of success, who's responsible, and Kristen is already way behind.
Well, her name, that department's listed all the way down here.
Yeah, she's got a red thumbs down right now, so.
Sounds like we need a team. Build a team of roder.
Oh, that department will need to delegate.
Yeah, we're gonna have to.
Collaborate.
I'm willing to help, but not that much. So each, each initiative will get one of these, and so I know that a couple of you have brought forth a couple of ideas about things that you think may need to be explored further, and I agree with that. I think that they all fit nicely into the action plan. So housing was brought up as an issue. When we're talking about the big ideas and, you know, taking a look at the, the big ideas and how do we best implement those. and how do we best implement those, housing is a key piece of that. When we're talking about workforce and wages, housing is also a key piece of that. So, I mean, as we're putting together these action plans, and I think that that ties into, you know, so that you can get clear eyes on, if you think about the strategic plan, it's, you know, two to four years out. Our action plans are going to be that far out, but we're also going to target in on, you know, the next years where the projects, making sure that we are putting the things down that we can actually accomplish, like the work plan that we typically do every year. I anticipate quarterly progress reports to the council, meaning the next time that I would hope to bring all of this back in front of you in just a progress report form would be about the beginning of April, April 7th, I think, is the date. And then evaluating the strategic plan and whole on an annual basis, and then doing every other year major updates. I'd suggest the first major update would be after 2021. And you'd kind of want to follow after an election typically so that any new members may be able to put their voices in as well. So, a lot of work yet to do, but if, if you like where we're at, then we can, we can really get the pedal to the metal.
Mr. Reynolds?
And, and a reminder to everyone that this is a process. We're not going to, we're not going to get it right from the, the gate. This is a first for us. And so it's going to take us some time. We're going to, we're going to analyze what we're doing. If, if something doesn't seem to ring true, we're going to rework it, you know, but, and that's part of why Nate has stated, you know, we're going to take a big look at it annually and then actually have major updates to it within two years. So there's, there's a lot of opportunity to update it, change it, if, you know, have it reflect the future. Like any other plan, it's only effective until, you know, something, something goes south. And then, and then you, then you take a step back and you readjust and then you move things forward.
No, I think we've taken a big step by going through the process over a couple, you know, a couple of workshop, workshops and then two times here getting it more. This is kind of exciting, right? Because this is kind of what the next phase would look like. And, and I, I think that's pretty cool. And, yeah, we can tweak it as we go. Certainly the, you know, the arrows or the thumbs up, you know, I think when we start baselining it, it'll all kind of be neutral until you can start getting some inertia on, on moving those dials a little bit. So, other comments? Nate, if that's it, thanks.
Thank you.
You bet.
We'll look forward to the next update. All right, moving along. Item 11, other businesses. Is there any, oh, I, no, jumped too far ahead. 10A, city bill list is in front of us for our review.
I have.
Oh, question?
Yeah, well, not a question. I'm, I already asked the question. I looked at check number 145076, which was $3,000 to the Metro Dining Card. And I asked Financial Director Nate and Jay to clarify what exactly that was because it kind of stood out. And they provided some really good information on that. And it's a fundraiser that the Senior Center does, and the funds go to support the senior programming. They sell these cards.
Box of cards.
These cards. They're $25 for a box of cards and it's a, it's a meal plan. I think it's two for one. Does that make sense? Two for one? Buy one, get one free. Maybe that's the way to word it. And, and they're still available at the Senior Center.
At the Senior Center?
At the Community Center. At the Community Center to buy.
All right. You get a cup of coffee and buy one of them?
I think that was a real nutshell version of what, the information that I got, but, but I think it's a good program. So I appreciate the work that they.
All right. Anything else on 10A? If not, then we would move to 10B liaison and administration report. Counselor Brennan?
I, I really have nothing to report.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, Shakopee Utilities, last night, the Taco Bell water is complete and installed. There was a water line break on bluff. Let's see, they're currently doing a pilot well on the property where the tower is going to be, going to be. They're, they're about 190 feet down, I guess, and they finally hit some rocks.
On top of the hill?
Yep, they hit rock at 187. Nobody knows how deep they got to go. They're guessing, they're guessing about 350. We'll see, see where that goes and get the water quality. They passed pipe oversizing cost on Mount Olive Church and Windermere South Second Edition. The oversizing was a little bit more expensive because there's a half mile of water main that was changed from 12 inch to 16 inch per their policy, going east, west, and north and south every half mile to serve future developing areas. Total of that was $78,000 and $95,000. So, almost $200,000 in oversizing costs for future growth. We had no electrical outages since the last meeting, which is a first for me. You know, maybe in the past that has happened, but it's the first that I can recall in my short time in liaison. They're changing out some old poles around town. Tree trimming in areas, Shakopee, Prior Lake joined together, I guess, is a problem with trees on power lines. So they're cutting some of them back. Canterbury North is complete. MMPA has assembled their board for 2020 and they have an A-plus rating, according to Finch. The last thing I have is that the commission would like to see our administrative staff work with their administrative staff on a regular basis. And I think, and that's all I have. There's obviously other stuff that was, oh, nitrate result reports were out. All of ours are lower than about half or less of what the concerned area would be. And they did get an award for, who did that word come from? Federal government, state government? It was the fluoride in the water. Apparently they do a really good job with water fluoridization. It was from Center of Disease and Control, CDC, Health and Human Services, US Department of. I was looking at some stats in there. It was like, it's amazing how much it lowers your dental bill and apparently has a good health benefit to it that many people in our society say is bad, but apparently you want to hand that down to our staff and they can cruise through what was on the agenda packet. And that's all I have, sir.
Counselor Lehman, thank you very much. I don't have a lot. I want to make sure that all our residents had a happy and safe holiday season and Happy New Year. I did visit a local troop here back on December 21st and they wanted me to talk about civic duty. And so I had a pretty good conversation with this Cub Pact. I think there are about nine of them there, some young, young boys and, and gals. So, I always like doing that. It's interesting questions like, you know, it's a full-time job and, and things like that. And, and can you change the speed or the, not the speed limit, but the, the lights? The, the stoplights? They were asking about that. It, that's great. I also did receive a, a letter from Girl Scout Brownie Troop 27297. And this group, they all signed it. They really want no smoking in our parks. And I, I didn't respond. There, there wasn't a, a phone number. I guess I could do it by letter, but I believe we have a no smoking policy in our parks as, at, as we speak. I mean, that's been in effect for a while. But I did receive that. Also, I get a magazine called Housing Industry News. Headline Banner of Year from Home Builders. And then you open it up to page nine and it's talking about the impact of fees back in, back in court in the city of Dayton. And then the Builders' Association's talking about their fees. And I know we put out a fact sheet about fees for a city standard, I guess a standard house. We use 375 or something and it came in at like seven and a half percent or something. And I think for these builders to accuse communities of overcharging them, you know, and they, the point that they never want to talk about is that labor and the cost of materials are 80% of the house expense to begin with, along with the cost of the land. And typically, those are things we don't control. So, but that is my liaison report. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, the builders also don't want to talk about the impacts that their developments have on the existing infrastructure.
Well, very good point. Very good point. And I know the league has been, the League of Minnesota Cities is our advocacy group for that and they're going to continue to do that along with the MLC. So, that's my report. Counselor Whiting?
I have nothing to report.
All right. Counselor Contraes?
No report tonight.
All right. And the highlight of the evening, the administrative report.
Nothing at all, sir. Appreciate it.
Well, that makes quick duty of that. 11 now, other business. Otherwise, if we have no other business.
Cannot.
Oh, Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, procedural question. Would a motion for a recess be better positioned before closed session or after wearing clothes session?
We have to go into closed session and then come out and then I have to announce what action, if any, we take.
I'm not asking that. I'm asking for a recess for five minutes.
Oh, we even do.
I'll second.
Would we recess? The question was, do we recess before we go into closed session or after?
Yes.
Before?
No, before.
Okay. I make a motion to recess for five minutes?
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to recess for five minutes and then we will come back to closed session under Minnesota Statute, Chapter 13D, Point 05, Subdivision 3D. That'll be a closed session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. We stand in recess. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. We stand in recess. We will reconvene this City of Shakopee City Council meeting for January 7, 2020. And with that, I would take a motion to adjourn to closed session. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we, we adjourn it into a closed session pursuant to Minnesota State Statute, Section 13D05, Subdivision 3D.
Mr. Mayor, just, the statute also requires us to identify the facility or event that we're going to be discussing, which my understanding is it's going to be security in city council chambers here during, during and before and after meetings.
Correct.
I have a motion?
A second?
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. And if you just bear with me until we go into full closed.